So let's bring this to order. This meeting was called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and Highland Park Planet on February 3rd, 2025, and was posted on the Borough website at www.htborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the left or to the right of the chambers. Please speak into the microphone. And now let's do the pledge of allegiance. The citizens of the United States of America, in due repub, righteous hands, donation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Go Paul.
Ms. Hahn, Mr. Bresch, Mr. Chen.
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Ho.
President.
Mr. Linares. Mr. Malay.
Here.
Mr. Perlman. Mr. Stern Cardinal.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Crisenza.
Here.
Mr. Oatch.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the June 12th, 2025 regular meeting. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. I noticed that the minutes say that we provide notice to the Highland Park Plant on these minutes. Is that still in print?
I do not know.
On page two, the advocacy organization about, I'm sorry, this, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 lines down. It should be the Fair Share Housing Center, not Fair Housing Center.
So it's in the middle of the sentence?
Yes.
And what was your correction?
Fair Share Housing Center. Share. Okay. I have a number of suggested paragraph breaks on this page and the next page for the many people who will read this in the future to have a bit easier time reading. And near the bottom of the page on the left side, it says 25,000 people commuting into town. I think there's an extra zero there. Especially if you reference the actual housing plan, page 27.
No, I would agree. So would you like to, just probably be easier to email your paragraph suggestions?
I've got the mic I can provide them to you.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Does that work for you? Any other questions or comments or minutes? Or motion to adopt?
Second.
All this in favor? Or do we?
Uh, yes.
All right, go Paul.
Mr. Chen.
Hi.
Ms. Hadhazy. I'm Stacey. Mr. Hale.
Yeah.
Mr. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. Linares. Mr. Malay.
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardinal.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's second then?
Thank you.
We're going to switch the order here. We're going to begin with the hearing on new matters, the YFM LNN 810 North Second Avenue LLC. I think it's a division. And since I think you all are here and people from the public are here, so I think that would be the best use of our time. And how, so do we have somebody making a proposal? So we're going to take up the matter, so whoever's making the application. You do, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Warren Fink, I'm the attorney for the applicant of this matter. And Mr. Chairman and Board members, my client's very proud to make this
Nothing.
application before the board today. And it's also, it's a culmination of
Excuse me, Warren, could you just make use of the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, everything is not. Is that good? No. Is that recording?
So.
It's the green light.
Okay.
Okay, so start again for the record. So, Mr. Chairman and Board members, my name is Warren Fink, I'm the attorney for the applicant of this matter. My client is very proud to bring this application before the board since it's the culmination of a cooperative effort with the Borough over the course of many months. My client purchased this building at 810 North Second Avenue that was formerly used as a laboratory and is now seeking minor site plan approval to convert the building to a multifamily apartment building consisting of four units along with various improvements to the exterior area of the building. No variances are required or sought. And the application thanks the Borough for having worked out a redevelopment plan for this property that was adopted by the Borough and makes this application possible. Now that the basics are out of the way, I propose to call Brian Murphy, an engineer from FWB Associates, to provide more details, respond to comments by the Borough professionals, and answer any questions. My client's architect is also here, Mr. Maffelli-Gut Van Associates and Consultants, and he will also be available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, raise your hand, please, to assert testimony about to give this course and truth to hold truth and nothing but the truth. I do. Can you briefly provide your credentials?
Sure. Brian Murphy, MUR, BHY, 1856 Route 9, Tom River. I'm a principal at FWH Associates. I've been practicing engineering for thirty some odd years now. I have not had the pleasure of being before your board, but I've been before roughly a hundred other boards throughout the state as well as accepted as professional by the Spirit Board as well. I'm a graduate of NJIT, I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering.
All your licenses are current and up to date?
They are.
Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, the application tonight is 810 North Second Avenue. It's block 503, block 24.
Might you turn that so we can see?
Maybe put it closer on an angle to the door, yeah. Something like that. I'm trying to stand up to block it. So I'm indicating Exhibit 81, or Exhibit 1, I guess it'll be Google Earth aerial shot of the property. Property is indicated in red roughly in the center of the plant. To the north is kind of up, so to the north of Second Avenue, there's single-family houses beyond. To the east, there's single-family homes as well. South, there's single-family homes. To the west, there's a vacant lot which then goes down to the street. And as you can see, there's apartments beyond. Basically, it's a commercial use in the middle of a residential neighborhood. What's going on? So it's a, it's a current laboratory. So we're looking to convert this into four two-bedroom apartments. Basically, rehab the existing building. I'll go to briefly to up close Exhibit 3. It's a color rendering of the front of the building. It's just a simile of what we're looking to do. Basically, substantial improvements to the exterior and interior of the building. Try to have an up-to-date book compared to, especially compared to what's there now. Lighting, windows, obviously, the exterior would be completely redone, the stuff out. And a new landscape package as well, and dress up the building and make more presentable. Especially compared to what's going on now. Bike rack in the back, the trash area will be in the rear of the building as well. Going to the site plan.
Chairman, excuse me, would you like the exhibits to be marked to be? Are these, was the site plan submitted with the application?
It was.
Okay. We don't have to mark. Okay, thank you.
So this is just color rendering of 101. It's the exact same plan I was submitted to the board, it's just in color. As you can see, the building is existing. We're not proposing to demolish the building or change it in that way. Basically, we're going to redo the inside and the exterior of the building. There's an existing driveway off of North Second Avenue. It comes around the back. I will have four parking stalls, a hose along the rear. And on the far rear, there's going to be a canopy. There's a steps that go down to the basement level. And the trash is going to be basically stacked along that back area as well as a bike rack also. So we'll have improvements obviously to the exterior. We're actually reducing the impervious slightly compared to what's out there. As you can see, there's not a whole lot. We're changing with the site or we can really do site-wise because it's almost entirely posed by the driveway and the building itself. Stormwater, we're not providing any stormwater. Again, we're not impacting or changing or increasing any drainage compared to what's out there today. Parking, there's four stalls provided, and that is what is required. There are a couple of waivers that we'll be requesting. Walkways between entrances of building and the parking areas. We are providing a walkway off the main walkway off the Second Avenue to a door that'll be on the north side of the building. And there's a walkway in the rear, but there's basically a door on the side right against the parking lot. So we're going to line that up with the striped area of the handicap parking. So there won't be a wall per se, so technically it's a rear. Shade trees along the perimeter of the parking lot. There's no room basically to safely provide shade trees in that area without basically picking up the pavement and disturbing the pavement. And there's not enough room for them to grow in that area. We can provide two street trees along the front. I wouldn't recommend it only because the power lines run overhead right in that location. So if we do something, it's going to have to be something that doesn't grow very high. We can provide it. I'll leave that to the board on what you would rather.
And right now, I think there's just small shrubs in front.
It's actually grass right along, right along that front area between the sidewalk and the curb. It's grass.
Yeah, but against the building?
Up against the building, we have, yeah. Well, there's some shrubs there now, they're not great. So we're going to be redoing all that and dressing that up substantially. But between the sidewalk and the curb, that's really what I'm talking about, whether we provide street trees there or not. I don't think it's a great location only because of the power lines. If they weren't there, I'd say absolutely.
How wide is that?
It's about, it's about five feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's wide enough to put a tree in. You know, that's not really the issue. It's more having the power lines literally directly over here. But I'll leave that to the purview of the board, whether you want those or not. And the last waivers for green infrastructure strategies. Again, there's not a lot we can provide on the site. If we're coming in new and this was a blank site, that'd be something else. But we're really kind of limited on what we can actually physically do. The sidewalk does go into the planting beds that we have. So that would be one, but we have to have two. And I just can't meet the second one. So that'd be the third waiver. The other waivers that are indicated in the specials review letters will be eliminated. So it's only those three. With regard to review letter, CME's letter dated 8/7/25. Agree with all the comments in that letter. Only item five would be the only one that has any kind of issue with it, if you want to call it that. It's asking us to get waivers from the Soals Conservation District in the county. Soil Conservation District threshold is 5,000 square feet of disturbance. We have nowhere near that. So rather than going through the exercise of getting a waiver, I just don't have to do that because the site's barely over 5,000 square feet. So it's really unnecessary.
But you will get the letter of exemption from the Nosec County?
Yeah, the county is actually electronically, it's kind of a much faster process where it may take five to six weeks to get a response from soils on something like this. And this is really just an exercise of capability. And the Environmental Commission letter, they recommend forest pavement for the driveway. The driveway exists, we're proposing to leave it as is, so we're supposed to keep that. The walkways though, we do have some proposed walkways as I indicated in the front and in the rear. That we can make a paver rather than the concrete that's proposed now. So we can get some forest pavers there and kind of at least help mitigate a little bit on the things that we're proposing on the site as opposed to what exists. The rain barrels, we just don't have room for rain barrels in a safe location. The building, they request that it be cleaned. It's going to be completely gutted, so it'll be clean. So it'll be fine on that end. The Commission on Universal Access, they ask for the ramp. There's a door in the rear, so basically it's just the ramp. Ramp down to the stairs that go to the basement and up to the door. And that's proposing. And I have no issues with the rest of the letter. LRK, letter of 8/7/25. We agreed to address all the items in the letter with the exception of the waivers that I indicated and the following items. Item 8.2, you know, some of these are really just discussion points. They ask that we make this event accessible, handicapped stall, which means basically the striping area has to be wider, so we will provide that. 8.4, they were asking that we push the wheel stops out from the building further, which I understand the thought process behind that. But my fear is that we, it's a tight turnaround as it is. I don't want to push the cars further back into that area. So rather, I'd rather put bollards up in front of the stalls that will keep them from hitting the building. So I think that's obviously a concern, that those blocks sometimes move and you don't want to hit anything. So put bollards in front of each one of those stalls so they can't hit. The driveway apron, they're requesting that we drop the slope of that driveway apron. Can't really do that because the driveway to the unit to our east, the house to our east is actually a foot and a half maybe off of our driveway and they're connected. And obviously, if we drop that, we're now regrading and redoing the driveway and we're redoing the sidewalk along the front because all that would have to drop as well. And I would point out that there is sidewalk along wayside, along our frontage. That's where the sidewalk stops. There's no more sidewalk down this area second.
There is now. Sorry.
We'll get to a little comment later.
You have a question?
No, yeah, just, I'm sorry, I got to. So on, I was on this site the other day. So you're saying that the, there's a block retaining wall? That is the property owners on the left?
I believe that's the property owners on the left.
Yeah. So in other words, it looks like that's on its last legs as well. So if you would underline it, it would.
Yeah.
So and there's, there's a slatted vertical wooden fence that goes around the property. Is that technically this applicant's or?
I don't believe so. I, that the fence is off the property.
Okay.
So I don't believe it's theirs.
All right, it's, it's falling down as well.
Yeah, it's not in great shape either. I agree. Yeah, that's not physically on the property. And 8.8, that just goes back to the street trees again that we already discussed. So I'll leave that to the purview report. And 812 is really regarding floor plans, which I'll look at.
Are there any questions from the professionals or any comments? You know, because he did answer some of what you were discussing.
I agree that the fence appears to be off the property and that dry stack block wall concerns me, but it's not on the property. There's an extension to like the lower ones you said in mortar and the upper ones are wobbly. But I walked in, I looked at it, and I looked at the plan. Maybe they can work with the neighbor, but seems like a hazard to me, but not much we can do.
No, just, you know, again, anything? Any comments?
I guess a couple of comments from the memo, 8.2. I guess for the venue of the board, can you walk us through how the rat and trash that's more service when the apartment space is occupied?
Sure, so we have about four feet on that north side of the parking lot. They're basically, we're showing a pad out there now. That door is going away. So I'll actually be able to shift those stalls up a little bit. So that last stall, I'm going to add that extra width to that last stall. So it'll gain a little extra room.
But you're also increasing the van accessible part?
Correct. Correct.
I'm not sure you can do both at the same time.
Well, I have to increase the ADA. You know, there's no waiver to that, so it has to be widened. So I'll pick up the three feet on this, it's roughly four feet. So I'll gain another foot on that, on that far one.
Onto, let's readdress the accessible apartment space, bike parking, like pad rather, it just needs to be resized. I think we'll deal with that when it's constructed or whether how the size is located before CO. The street trees, I agree with the shade tree advisor committee. There's opportunities to put street trees in, was likely to, a lower, smaller street tree if necessary. They recommend it, so I trust that they can find the right species.
Yeah, I'll look at the species that they recommend. I don't know if they were aware that the power lines were there. So I'll, by landscape architecture, put those trees and see if they're appropriate ones or not.
I agree, confidence that the shade tree advisor may made the right comment there. I'd like to see two trees as well. Regarding the lighting, clarify that won't be greater than 3300 Kelvin?
Yeah, we'll bring the temperature down.
Any signage?
There will be a sign. We're thinking maybe up on the dark top of the building. It'll be compliant, it's not going to be anything else sensational. It's kind of like maybe a name of the building or something along those lines. We'll revise the architecturals to provide that to show that it's
Okay, so it'll be a sign for the building, not an 810 for fire department access? Do we get a sign?
Yeah, it'll probably be a name of the building, you know, what we're picked. And then obviously, it'll be addressed as a public force.
Okay. I think we'll have to coordinate that with the redevelopment entity because the redevelopment plan's more or less silent on signage. It might be flexible, but it was intended to be addressed in the redevelopment agreement, which it wasn't. So since this sign is new, we'll have to collaborate with the redevelopment agreement. It's a minor thing, but a technical stepping up.
Okay.
Yeah, the 810 will have to be on a building pursuant to the fire departments' requests. And I have no issues with that, obviously. Everything else is related to the floor plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Start with Alan.
Am I correct, there's only one door for any of these apartments? So not two, two entrances or two exits?
There's two doors. So the front door feeds the front two units.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a side door and that'll feed the other two.
Okay. But it's essentially, it's one, one door for?
Two. One, yeah, there's basically come into a foyer and then there'll be a door for each part of the foyer.
To be clear, each apartment has only one way in and out?
Oh.
I'm sorry. So when you say two doors, each apartment is spread in length? Sorry. So when you say two doors, each unit still has only one way in and out?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Is that perceived?
Hold on, I'll take the hazard.
I'll let the architect address that.
Well, I was going to say, I have a question too, but I think
All right. I'm not qualified to answer this question.
Can we just wait to be called upon? Because we have, you know, people that are, so just everyone take a breath. So Alan, what was your follow-up question?
The answer.
Okay, and you had a question about what?
I'll wait for the architect.
Okay, and recently, you were next?
Yes, so mentioned about green infrastructure. Does that include building materials?
No, so there's sustainability and then there's green infrastructure. The green infrastructure really more addresses the exterior of the building and stormwater where the sustainability is more younger. Your windows, your efficiency of your HPC utilities, that'll still be compliant.
Are there any extra measures taken in the sustainability arena with regard to the building? I appreciate that you guys are not knocking this building down and you're just refurbishing the existing building. Does that add to the sustainability in this project?
Sure.
But are there any other sustainable initiatives being taken in the building of this building?
Yeah, the architect answers as well. So basically, the window treatments are going to be energy efficient. All the appliances are going to be energy efficient, energy efficient. All the toilets and sinks and everything else, and showers, all the basic water consumption reductions.
And I have one other question if anybody else has one more. So I know that this building was built with 1940, it's an older building. I'm not aware of the building's history in terms of renovating or if it had anything done to the city it's been built. Is there a concern regarding air quality during the interior demo?
I'd have to let the architect handle that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have kind of a small question, but something I always like to ask about. So we're talking about sustainability and green building practices and all that stuff. Is this intended to be all electric or are there going to be gas lines and gas appliances? If you know the answer.
I don't know the answer. I love you on
I'd say it should be all electric because we're going to have to retrofit everything in 10, 15 years anyway. So like just, you know, to the extent possible, it should be all electric. I don't know what the existing situation is in terms of gas lines to the various parts of the building or anything. But it's obviously cheaper if you're renovating and you don't have to build gas lines. It's cheaper to not do it and just have all electric where possible. So that's not in any standards or anything. It's just, we're going to have to deal with it anyway, so might as well do it on Friday.
Um, that, that exhibit, is that a rendering of the exterior?
The bottom one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an example of the types of material. The windows may be different and that kind of thing, but that's the general look of the building. It's going to be a stuck-up type building.
Okay. Is, is the, it's going to be taken into consideration in terms of like, you know, just looking like the surrounding buildings? Because I understand that stuff was not actually a material that's used in town.
Correct, but again, compared to what's there now, it's a substantial upgrade to what's there now. It's, it's, it's unattractive, let's say, right now.
Well, I mean, my understanding is that in terms of using stuff as an exterior material, there's permeability issues. It's just been my experience, so I don't know.
As long as it's constructed properly, it's not an issue. But then there were problems with EFS when you, when you had people that maybe not weren't the most experienced doing it. There were major issues with mold and so forth.
Go ahead.
So the location of this building is on North Second and Fleetwood Avenue, right? Like around that area?
Yeah, by Wayside, Wayside, yeah.
Why? Oh, okay.
Right by the
Yeah, Wayside is over here, the apartments are over in this area.
Right.
And then Second's here.
Okay, okay. And that area has a pretty diverse style of housing, isn't it?
Yeah, along, along Wayside, it's definitely a lot newer stock of houses, for sure. And obviously, as you get further back in the neighborhood, you have
And we have like a range of school in that area, and there are some commercial buildings in that area. So it wouldn't look fully out of place to this building.
I don't believe so. Again, we're not talking about something that's ultra-modern and really doesn't fit. It's just trying to rehab the existing building. We're kind of stuck to working with what we have. But I think the architect kind of
Will there be mixed materials on the exterior? Because in the rendering, it kind of looks like cement block and like signings. But you're saying a whole building is going to be stuck up?
Almost like the, meaning the entire thing is stuck up.
Okay.
Okay, any other? At this time, if anyone from the public has a question specific to the engineer and would like for the engineer, and would like to, you know, have addressed, this would be the time, if there's going to be, let's say, if you want to make comments at a later time, that doesn't preclude you, but this is, if you have a comment or a question at this point in time.
Guess I should use the mic? Now.
There you go. There's, there's Mike.
Sure, you're not fine.
Hi, my name is Lou Pichinson, I reside at two hundred Jackson Avenue.
Hi, sorry, can you, I need to get your name and address, I know you just said it both, well, sorry.
I'm sorry, Lou Pichinson, reside at two hundred Jackson Avenue.
Lou, you said?
Louis.
Lou Hendrickson?
L E W I S. Pichinson, P I C H I N S O N.
Okay, and your address?
It's two hundred Jackson Avenue.
And are you within a two hundred foot zone?
I'm right across the street.
So you got it.
My questions were, uh, and Pat, I don't know, it seems to me that I can ask questions about parking, is this appropriate?
I, I would assume so, yes, sure.
Um, I'm, I'm curious, there's four units, eh?
Yes.
And, uh, what is the standard, uh, I don't know the jargon, what is the standard factor for parking places per residential unit normally?
The ordinance is one per two for each unit.
And that ordinance is, has been amended by the.
That's the, that's the redevelopment.
That's the redevelopment plan, not, not the, not the ordinance. Uh, so we're going to have four units with four, uh, four parking spaces on site, and, um, having lived there ever since the, the, uh, the Wayside development went in there, with parking is, is really, um, a problem. Okay, and when the labs went under, it sort of alleviated our problem. Uh, so, what I'm saying is that there may have not been much ado about parking recently, there always has been, and it's um, one of the major problems is um, overflow parking from the.
Mr. Pichinson, if, right now, I just wanted to see if you have questions for what Mr. Murphy.
Well, I want to establish the context of the question, and that is that I believe that there's a problem with parking as is, and that this will exacerbate the, the problem. Okay? Okay, um, my, my, what, my, my comments are, uh, evidenced by, uh, the cover of the redevelopment plan, which shows a van parked in front of your, um, proposed pro development, and that's overflow parking from the, uh, from the other area, may I just show you that? So all I'm trying to establish is that there's overflow parking already, um, where are the other cars, which is four, four units? Are we suggesting that there's only going to be four cars in, in four two-bedroom units? So, one.
All, all I'm suggesting is we're meeting the requirement.
Okay, um. Well, then, my, my conclusion is that there, we, we are going to have problems there, and that the planning board should be taking that into account in some fashion or another, how many, uh, spaces will be, um, how many spaces will be fit on the, uh, the street in front of the property?
Two.
Two, so that's six, okay. Uh, again, my suggestion is, since a, a lot of that space is frequently taken, taken up by, uh, overflow, uh, I, I don't know what to say, I think it, it, you know, it's a very difficult problem, you guys are obviously, uh, content with doing that, but it's gonna be a problem that's gonna come back to the burrow of island park.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Pat.
Are there any, uh, questions from, uh, online public?
No.
Okay, so I guess, seeing none, uh, free to sit down. My next witness.
Thank you very much, Chairman, uh, next witness, our architect.
Have you been?
Just sort of, that's not even about to give the square, it's the truth, all the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, please.
My name is Naftoli Gutt.
Can I spot for me?
N A F T O L I G U T.
And can you briefly provide your credentials for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in Jersey, and several other states, I'm the principal of Gut Van LLC, it's a liquid-based architectural firm. I have testified in front of other boards, I've never testified here.
Okay, and, uh, for your licenses current?
Yes, they are.
Where is that, who's a expert?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, Mr. Gut, you've heard the questions. Questions before that have been presented, so perhaps you can, uh, enlighten the, uh, board and the public. I'll just give a, a quick brief overview. Um, again, first floor is three thousand five hundred thirteen square feet, second floor is a thousand four hundred and ten square feet, and the basement is nine hundred eighty-three. The building is nineteen feet four inches, the building will be fireproof construction, which is regular wood construction, will be fully sprinkled, that goes back to the question about the two egresses, right, it's a sprinkle building, so one, you know, we did a full code, code review, and, uh, one, one egress in each unit is adequate. Um, plus we have egress windows in the units. Okay, so the first floor has three units on the first floor, each one has two bedrooms, a kitchen, living area, and a home office, and, um, laundry, and each one is equipped with two bathrooms. They are type A bathrooms, as is required. The second floor is one unit, also two bedrooms, living space, kitchen, home area, office area, and laundry. Um, the basement is just gonna be storage. Mr. Gut, could you explain what a type A bathroom is? It's, 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 it's handicapped as much as required by type A, it's a certain certain type of bathroom that's required for this type of units, so maybe you'll be equipped with a backing, if, if you ever install, uh, grab bars. So it's based, you know, three foot door, has enough clearance for, for a turnaround, and we'll be equipped with backing for, uh, grab bars. Thank you. I just want to address some of the comments from, from the letter. There was a comment about, about stairs in the basement. Um, that they go nowhere, which is correct, and they're gonna be taken out, you know, this stair goes up and goes down, and then will be eliminated. And you're gonna exit the basement from this ramp through the stairs over here. There was a comment about um, the commit, compatible, the plan is not compatible with the rendering, which is also truly the rendering was kind of more the concept, something goes. I was trying to show the materials, it's gonna be stucco, this is looking at stucco and square line, looking at a new new, new, um, base shot around the woods, looking at nice beautiful black windows, will not be configuration, figuring out the problem.
I don't think this photo is relied upon in this market, so can we just mark, this is premarked as exhibit two?
I think it was submitted.
Yeah, they were submitted.
Yeah, I've got the picture that we're, part of the set.
That's the, that was only other one.
That was also submitted.
Both in the application.
So, we have some of the stuccos. This also will be legalized, something that's for, then we have, uh, engineered wooden access, it's just, uh, just give it a little more contrast, and we have high efficiency. We have LED lights, all the, all the new pictures, these guys are, I mean, those are gonna be high efficiency, high efficiency fixtures. All the window units, on seven, women, the units will be coming out, will be replaced with T-TAC units, or many, and that, many splits for all the, every single unit lab is on the thermostat and its own unit. Good question regarding the hot water and, uh, and utility rooms, so this quarter, in the basement, will be, we're, the hot water units will be, again, be high efficiency. There was a comment about this unlabeled room, this room right now is the W elevator, that will get eliminated, we will pull the floor, interesting part of this open space. Um, there's a comment, new letter about this open space that's unlabeled, and it's just gonna be storage, open area. I think that's all that.
Any questions from our professionals, Bruce or Chris?
Uh, just a couple, the applicants have addressed a lot, and most of the comments in my memo. Um, I just clarify regarding, whether it's regarding the condenser units, or will there be any exterior units on the ground where they're moving out here?
Yeah, we're, we're still debating if we're gonna protect units, which won't need, or we're gonna use maybe split to each unit, and if that, if that's the case, it will be a condenser's along the right side of the building. You know, out of, out of the walkway, between the walkway and the building.
On the right side of the building? Big say. If that's the case, do you anticipate, what setback do you anticipate that there would be?
Between the units and bone?
Yes.
Would be pretty, pretty close to bone.
It could be wall-mounted. It might constitute a bearings, but I, I don't know, since this information's from you. But given that the, there's a large green space for the townhouse development next to it, it should have AI impact on the surrounding here.
There's probably, just from, I was just there today, there's about three, four feet between the wall and that vertical fencing. Give or take, uh, it would be difficult, you know, depending on how they're arranged, you know, you might have some difficulty getting around them to service different units, but other than that, you, you, you basically can't even see the, uh, building too well through the considerable number of trees on that side there.
Yes, according to the survey, the setback varies between two point four and two point five feet. And a, uh,
I guess the fence is.
Basically, I guess suitcase size, large suitcase size, so it would have a setback of about a foot. I would need to review the ordinance, the bareness is required, but as I said, and I agree with Chairman, uh, it would have minimal impact on the any, uh, screen and buffer reveal.
We could, we could, um, consider putting on, there's a counter.
Uh, one of the bedrooms in unit number two, I could not tell because drawings did not appear to scale, and I understand you're coming to the project. That will have to be resized, we have these, well, one of the.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Correct, yeah, it was, it was off by a few feet, well, just.
Okay, so you were, we will be receiving revised plans of that. Our building.
Yeah, I believe, uh, it was discussed that it's a matter of several feet, and they, they, they would address it.
Okay. And obviously, I had a sketch plan, had a sketch plan offering suggestions to kind of clean up the construction, which I think the contract loves, since the walls have been lined up. It's just offered for consideration, you don't have to comment on it. It's across with your question?
I was gonna ask the architect, mini splits can be, the condenser unit can be mounted to the wall, correct?
It could, it's not.
And they only stick out about a foot fifteen inches, I don't think they're gonna be very large units, so, so that might be the easy one to get to the service and fly it, and each individual.
Looking nice and then.
Any, uh, questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
I, I'm gonna speak up, my only concern, given, and it was brought up, I think, with the site engineer, um, in that if you are living in the front part of the building, and you park around the corner, you basically have to walk up the driveway to the entrance, right, there is no secondary entrance to the front apartments from the parking lot per se, other than walking up the driveway.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, there is parking in front of, of the building as well, and, you know. Anyway, I just, there, I just wanted to clarify, there's no back way into the front apartments.
Well, one unit has, has an extra door going inside.
No, I meant the front.
The front unit's not.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, questions, Lisha?
Uh, I have a question regarding the mini split, is there one mini split per room in the unit?
Well, usually the way it's done is, is there is like, you know, one condenser, and then there'll be a few, your handlers in each room.
Pretty true, okay.
That's the way that, well, we'd wanna do it.
And would they also be providing the heat, or is the?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no, um, they're only giving ductwork running through, okay, so it's all ductless, heat here, got it?
Spray controls for each room.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question about the doors, again, uh, just trying to, uh, reconcile the first floor plan with the rendering here.
It's on the bottom. No, I, 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 I. It was bad report, so we're looking how this, listen to two units, right?
Exactly, yeah, it's gonna get, it's gonna get less.
Okay. The look, this is the look, the grand entrance will, will break it off, will be over, will, between, it's just kind of like, hey, this is, this is what we have here, but it will be revised to be planned. Okay.
Any other questions?
Lisha, again?
Oh, Chris.
Chris?
Um, actually, Chairman, to your comment about the rear access, uh, the sketch that I provide, actually, in a way, tries to resolve that issue, such that all the units have your access.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Uh, the sketch provided in my memo was a consideration that addresses your comment about providing rear access for all four units.
Okay.
Again, that's for applicants consideration, I know when we were contemplating the concept plan while drafting the draft plan, I had offers, ideas about having a common corridor from front of the building, that way guests could enter from the building, instead of walking down the driveway, which I fear our doors, uh, but I, I would agree that the, that there's extremely limited space, putting a common hallway would chew up a lot of square footage.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, actually, there's a comment that, um, Mr. Stank, Dan Stank, I know, he raised about the, whether it be gasoline service to building. Um, on the top, since you were talking about the ductless units, would be any gas service for appliances, I believe so.
Maybe, you know, it's older. That would like. Yeah. Kidding, yeah. Yeah.
I asked a pretty good gentleman, um, questions regarding the sustainability and any sustainable materials that are being used in the building out, can you speak to that?
Yeah, again, all the, all the, all the appliances will be. Yeah, pushing, only the appliances that I want to share now, that's, that's a major upgrade, and also the, the, all the walkways now have a little insulation, which is recycled at the station. We're planning on keeping the brick aside, just putting stuff, stuff over it. Essentially not wasting it. Maybe the size that. Wash and dry, pressure, or, or, or fixture, up to the edition, fixtures.
Is building being constructed in a way that in the future could, um, convert to solar?
I would say so, because it essentially can just be put on the roof, so I don't believe that. I don't actually quite understand now, but there's no reason why I could have done.
And, um, my last question that I asked the gentleman that spoke before you was, is there a concern regarding air quality during the demo of the interior?
Well, it's gonna be contained.
Yeah.
Not consideration of that. Footprint staying, essentially, just a big side on the interior.
But the interior is being gutted, correct?
Correct.
Is, um, there a possibility that what is being demoed inside has maybe been painted or asbestos?
Well, if there is, they'll, they'll have a, asbestos removed. And you just said it's gonna be.
Alright, ready, ready, cat?
Boulder, you ready, honey? That's in the car.
Okay.
And one more question, Chris.
Not really a question, just a comment, I think, but board members alluding to is that borough is hypersensitive to demolition. Felt with a large project on Cleveland Avenue and it was a nightmare. So I was wanting sure the applicants have noticed that they need all the boxes to themselves. That plus concerns mainly.
Agent. I have a question. Yes, I have a question about windows. Do you anticipate any access to the roof from the second floor unit, whether for maintenance or for emergency or for someone just wants to be on the roof?
No, we, we, again, the ladder is, it's not high enough, it's not too high for a ladder, so. Again, also you have some, some events you're going to have to do on the roof.
I have a question, just to be clear on the stucco, it is the synthetic stucco, right? Is it, is the rendering with the synthetic application, does this look like almost a
A block, it's just like a block, it's kind of like, like they put score lines and stuff and that kind of look, but it's just stucco.
But the synthetic stucco can replicate that?
Yeah, it's just all with, with leading spaces.
Alan?
Is the roof sloped so that the water goes into the drains?
Roof just suffers on the sides, it's a slight pitch on the side of the building that the light water off. It's not sloped, it's a flat roof with, you know.
So it's sloped a little bit so water will flow?
Yeah, and so it's either sloped to the center drain sometimes, or sometimes sloped to the perimeter where it goes out of a small hole on the side of the building.
Will your drain pipes be underground?
Maybe she has the engineer?
Wait, wait, you want to progress that?
Chris?
It's just, I'm sorry, I think I missed it. So the roof, there will be scuffers on the roof?
I'm not sure up in there now of the center drains.
There are gutters and leaders coming in.
Leaders all the side of the building?
Off the R end going down wayside, you know.
Yeah.
Away from both sides.
And in the apartment. Whenever, whenever system is there, just in a state without posing any
It looks like it's sloped, much like the rest, you know, the property slopes considerably that way. Looks like if the roof is pitched, it goes that way. I, I don't, it can't tell because it's in disrepair if there's one or two leaders that dropped from there. There is a gutter at this time.
Yeah, I think my comment was that if it's not on the sides of the building, the right side would now setback with the left side with the driveway is. There seems to be opportunities for like a planter, stormwater plant box, at least allow for slower. A little concern about stormwater runoff to neighboring properties, to the houses, to the rear, even if they exist. I hope we got a planted box, it's a terribly expensive. Maybe there's just a bunch of pressure treated wood and some actually would probably eliminate one of the barriers to the redone plan.
So in the front, certainly anything we can get into the front planting beds, it's fine. The rear though, one problem with the rear is we have bike racks and basically where the trash cans are going to go as well. So it's, it's getting tight back there. We could direct the roof gutter towards the open space that's next to us rather than
Well, that could also refer to Mr. Constrator. I think any opportunity slowly, with regards to the rear accessory, the bike rack, the ramp stairway on a I don't think they move around, so I think there's an opportunity to put something there and it doesn't have to be very large.
My concern would be you're redirecting flow onto a property that never had the flow. And then they'll be asking why that happened to them. So you want to use rain barrels to attenuate the runoff? I walked in the back, it seems like it's naturally all going down natural.
It all goes that way now.
That way now, so I think you're going to do something to attenuate the flow, that would be appropriate, lessen the impact. But it'll be a longer period of time, but I know it's just an open lot, but if it was my open lot, I'd say
I get it, yeah.
There are trees there in between, it's very well wooded and if you had a swell there and it kind of, but it's not a lot of room.
No. Any questions from the public, for the architect? Any questions from the press online call? At this time, I, I, as usual, it's, before we do a motion to, it's, we want to kind of codify or exactly what we are asking to approve. You know, there are certain waivers and, but there were discussions about this might meet the waivers, so I was just wondering how we put this in. Ogen kind of thing.
I mean, I guess make a motion to approve the application or as a condition of approval, I would recommend that we get updated plans within thirty, sixty days to reflect all the, first off, the second floor and everything else that was discussed. Possibly recommend some sort of a ten weighted drainage system, just to meet concerns, just so we're not creating any trespassing in neighboring blocks. And also, and also, and while we would incorporate all the comments previously made, we want, if the shade tree commissions, if they want trees, they'll find, they'll have to find some trees.
Of manageable.
Yeah, not more, they could be ornamental. Something that is not, yeah, it's not going to create any further hurdles, yes?
May I suggest also an updated rendering that more closely resembles what the actual building is going to look like? Since the rendering that we're showing tonight is basically just to show us the material for the building, but something that actually like
Required for cycling? A rendering, not per se, and from a practical perspective, no one's going to see the revised rendering other than myself. I think we can address the issue of where penetration is on elevations and construction permits stuff. So I don't think renderings are necessary, unless you feel strongly about it, it's really up to the board too.
I'm, I mean, I see what this rendering looks like and I trust the design study that was similar to what we're seeing tonight.
What you could do then, I recommend the council is that the construction plans be substantially similar to what we're presenting to the board.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I As we, can I get a motion to adopt the, if you have something to say?
So I'm sure to be open up to public for questions and comments for the whole application.
Oh, are there any questions in public for the entire application or comments this time? Online, anyone online? So hearing that will close the public portion of this hearing and I'd like to, if there is one, a motion to adopt. Motion to adopt?
Second?
I was going to say contingent upon all the stuff we talked about.
All parts and all together for a resolution, I know there's a lot to, but to incorporate all Mr. Conz's, Ms. Couch's comments. And what I just discussed, and within sixty days.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Hazy?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Just, I'll just take a short bathroom break and then he's in camper, you're second. Here, I will reclaim the August fourteenth planning board meeting with the public hearing on the preliminary investigation of a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Sunoco block two, two, zero, one, lot six, seven, nine, ten, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. Mr. Conz, you have the floor.
I'm going to try to share this.
Hey, sworn.
Do you serve a testimony about to give this where is the truth, the whole truth, enough of the truth?
I do. Board of judges. Chairman, counsel, board members of board, members of public are listening online, thank you for allowing me to do this, although you're directed by a council, so I don't think you had a choice to do this. So in a, in a way, just sort of a long awaited action. What about the Sunoco station? So we're, we're here for that. So as a general overview, as we typically do, my investigations I present to the planning board, to get a high level summary of the, I like to say detailed report. And so I'm going to start with a, an overview, why we're doing this, the scope of the study, what it took for me to do this study, the context of that within the statute. And just generally some basic description of the study area, it's not just a Sunoco station. And then the meat and potatoes of the presentation, the actual evaluation and the conclusion that the report takes and the recommendations that I suggest that the planning board take relative to the recommendations you would have to the mayor and council. So generally speaking, the study area, again, is not just the Sunoco station. It's block twenty-two oh one, lots forty-six and seven, that is one thirty-eight, one forty, Raritan Avenue, Sunoco Station. Lots forty-seven, forty, and ten, that's a separate property known as ten to fourteen South Second Avenue. That's the property with the BB Bake Food Mart and Al's Professional Cleaners. And lot six, it's one thirty-four Raritan Avenue, it's a residential looking structure, as is lot nine, one thirty, Raritan Avenue. So these are four different properties, seven lots. So generally speaking, over the past now twenty plus years, the boroughs really try to, you know, seek ways to make the community a vital, stable place to live, work, and play. And part of that includes taking a proactive role in redevelopment plan pursuant to a local redevelopment housing law. Especially within the downtown area and other commercial areas such as Cleveland Avenue, Fort Bridge, and Upper Area. Beginning in two thousand nine, there was actually a mixed use project contemplated for those two residential structures, one thirty, one thirty-four Raritan Avenue. They received approval from this board, again, this is two thousand nine, but they never pursued the project. In two thousand, beginning in two thousand twelve, there was an application for us, seven eleven, that was after, I believe, ten meetings, it was eventually denied. Actually, my colleague Jim Constantine represented the objectives and that's sort of what brought us here to this community. And in two thousand seventeen, there was a larger mixed use building considered for the same properties, one thirty, sorry, for seven eleven toward a Sunoco station. We're going back now to one thirty, one thirty-four Raritan, a larger mixed use building was considered with the concept of offsite parking. Reason for that was maybe we shouldn't rely on park place because that's where residential homes frontline, we don't want all that traffic to go through. So the idea was obviously centered on track D and has some centralized parking, but there's ways for other tracks have, could have their own parking. And obviously, as you know, the past few years, track A, track C are proceeding in your own direction. Meanwhile, track B has not, for several reasons. So that concept of a larger mixed use building on what we're calling track B was considered. And after we did the area study for gunboat, a year later, then we did the redevelopment plan for tracks A through D, really central, centered on the concept of centralized parking, perhaps a plaza in North Third, which became South Third after public comment. And track B was sort of folded into the application because they already had a developer, rare and ready to go. So we folded that concept into the plan, whereas everything else is more or less for our own, we're trying to get RPs, get interesting, we would like to get downtown moving. And so in two thousand twenty-two, we did do the RP process, they selected redevelopers for tracks A and C that were moving along. We expanded track C as a result, negotiated on a concept plan two thousand twenty-three. And we amended the plan after expanding the designation and working further with the realtor for track C. And then just a few months ago, we did a combination area redevelopment study for the classic cleaners. So really an overview, we have been multiple applications, three entities for several properties within the study, but they never pursued, been pursued, or even approved. And all these properties have had extended vacancies over years, which I'll describe later. There has been progress again at tracks A and C, but track B really hasn't been able to figure out the offsite parking. We're not going to let them by virtue of a redevelopment agreement, can't, you'll not let them proceed until they figure that out. But in years, and I think the community, including this board, members of council, members of public, ourselves included, as you know, has been a lack of progress in the middle. Why not focus on Sunoco, what's to deal with that? So we hear you, mayor and council authorized planning board to conduct this study. And as required by the local redevelopment housing law, in that resolution to authorize a study, you have to declare whether or not you may or may not use redevelopment. What that really means, since two thousand thirteen, the state requires that when you do your resolution, if you're going, if you're not going to use a domain domain, just call it non-combination area redevelopment. If you may use it, you have to say upfront, you may use it, we're going to call it combination area redevelopment. That does not mean the borough is required to or has to, it's just that they in terms of the scope of study, we've done this a few days before, so we get a, I tried to do a very detailed study, do inventory of all the records and site inspection, review records of planning and zoning, construction, health, fire, police, tax. I get a lot of help, so I appreciate all the staff assisting me on that. Much more helpful than other communities around the state. Also look at environmental reports and sometimes I lean on the borough's other experts such as LSRP to kind of make sense of what's the status of the environmental data. As well as our own GS map, review tax maps, zoning ordinance, faster plan. And then of course, the fun part is the site inspections and you'll see some photos and believe me, I had so much fun on this one. And then obviously prepare the ass report. I think it's hopefully easy to read, even though it's very long, try to write it the way we're trying to break it down as easier bites and understand why we're doing it, why it meets the criteria and make clear what the recommendations are. As you know, the statute is pretty simple, it's really to guide the municipalities through the rehabilitation redevelopment efforts, the advantages of doing that. Obviously, it's more flexibility than zoning, you get site specific concept plans and regulations, really, you're being proactive about development. Whereas when you do typical site plan applications, whether it's planning or zoning, you're always reacting, can we have more trees, can we do that? I'm not sure about the parking, but for redevelopment, you're working together as a public private partnership. And there's also opportunities to require sustainability, green of structure, similar to what we saw on the last application, they were required to do it. And they're going to do it because we put into our redevelopment plan, you can't, it's hard to do that through a zoning ordinance. And of course, you could designate a specific redevelopment to do a project. It could just be the land developer, land owner, and define their obligations, which could include contributions and community benefits. And redevelopment is possibly successful, used throughout the state, including in Park, these are just two examples I use often, and I think they're very well done. I'm proud that ever since the sixteen we came in, we're seeing these happen and it's slowly but surely coming along. And really coming in place, the statute requires a very, very specific procedural sequence. And we are just sort of in the beginning of that step, even though there's been other planning related to track B, the two thousand and five plan and so on and so forth. But what we're really are is in the middle of that effort where we prepare the report, hold a public meeting. You're supposed to hear what I say in terms of why I think the property does or does not meet the criteria for redevelopment, to hear any comments in public. To hear any comments in public, any objectors, and so on and so forth. What your your role is is to whether you agree or disagree with the report, whether the property does or does not meet the area redevelopment, and then make recommendations by a resolution to the governing body. Um, in terms of the redevelopment statute, uh, there's eight of them. Uh, just briefly, A is about substandard living conditions or working condition. B is again, properties for at least two years. That was recently amended a few years ago to clarify two consecutive years. Uh, public C is public or unimproved vacant land, but for ten years or more. D is faulty range of design. E is ownership and title issues, not just that there's inefficiency or not fully productive, but it's as a result of ownership and title issues. Yeah, it's really about five years of damage from fire, natural disasters, G urban enterprise zones, which does not apply to um, um, bar and smart growth consistency. There's also section three criteria, which is really section three of the statute, which is a definition section. It literally is the definition of a redevelopment area, and that is one, which may include properties not meeting the criteria. Uh, but the inclusion of which is found necessary uh, with or without changing their condition for the effective redevelopment here. And that's important because in this study, I am using the section three criteria for two of the properties. And of course, we have a handbook now, third edition, says you can include these properties if they're essentially included in the destination. What's weird about that is, of course, you're doing a study in order to read on plans, but if you're using that section three criteria, you have to have some sort of foresight of a redevelopment plan that hasn't existed yet. In this case, we actually benefited from multiple redevelopment plans affecting these properties. So that actually makes my job and your job a lot easier. And, um, this is, I just want to put this slide together because I I say this anyway, but I just want to reiterate, this is not a windshield study. I'm not in my car going, yeah, it meets it. And I, you can't rely on me saying that, just reciting the statutes, that it meets it because of that. It should be based on a depth of map analysis, and there's case law that supports that. And frankly, you just have to really rely on the plain meeting of the criteria. It shouldn't go into uh, fits to try to see whether it meets a criteria because the benefit of the redevelopment criteria, you just need to meet one of them to declare whether the property is in the redevelopment. Um, with going back to the H criteria, that's a smart growth consistency. I put in the report, something I wrote for Camden, um, recently, that's a good primer of why, what, what, what is the section H? What's the criterion H mean in terms of smart growth consistency? Obviously, with regards to the statutory criteria, these are based on existing conditions that, uh, relates to show that the property is has obsolete design or there's some substandard condition, whereas smart growth is looking at the future. So a little bit different. So planners like myself tend to get a little skittish about whether to use the section H, uh, sorry, the criteria H uh, in redevelopment plans, especially when it comes to condemnation preliminary ports. So you'll see that I did not rely on the criterion H for this study because this is the condemnation area. If I want to rely on the physical features, uh, issues instead of forward thinking. So in terms of the existing conditions, uh, it's outlined in white, much easier to see on the screen, hopefully on PDF or your printed copy, you'll see these are seven lots altogether, less than one acre. So I'm talking a little bit tiny property, uh, and little old, um, bar, the barion ownership, two lots, lots six and nine are the same. Uh, and then Sanoco is one other owner, and then the BB Big's property is another one. So it's barion ownership. Uh, I didn't have a slide for this, but the report shows that the assessment value of assessed improvement value is less than the land improvement value, which suggests that there's some inefficiency of the, uh, property, which is especially critical in a downtown area, but we're not using that as reliance for this. Criteria, criteria.
I didn't understand that statement.
Sure. Uh, the assessed improvement value is less than the assessed land value, which suggests that the property is generally underutilized, especially in the downtown area. But that doesn't mean that it meets a certain criteria. I think years ago, planners used to, and as a result, case law, not touching that. But it just shows that there's an inefficiency and of these properties. Um, particularly in downtown area. Uh, the Sanoco Station obviously is an active site on the state's environmental management system list. I recall one of the members of the public brought that up, that what's the deal with that? Well, it's in their report that's pending. Now we're here for that. Uh, otherwise, the study area and much of the area in the downtown area, there's no wetlands, no flood hazard areas, and it's well served by utilities. Uh, obviously, you can see on the left map, the existing land use map, it's a mix of uses. And even though they're all vacant, at the show that it's current use, vacant land is when there's no building, no parking lot. So technically not vacant, but the the tendencies are vacant. Uh, and on the right side, you'll see that the um, study area is subject to one, two, three, four different zoning destinations. Two of which are redevelopment plans. So it's a mixed bag in terms of land use as well as zoning, which is not ideal for redeveloping. You have to reconcile all that. So now, uh, the fun part. So this is the actual evaluation as to whether or not, uh, I believe that the properties for them, for properties, uh, meet the criteria. Uh, you'll see at the end, end of the report that I it's my opinion that all four do meet at least one of criteria. So I'm going to just go through, this is a high level of why I think each one of them are. We're going to start with Sanoco Station, block twenty-two oh one, lot seven forty-six. Uh, the previous findings, it actually was already designated as an area needed on twenty years ago. And then it was put into the two thousand five redevelopment plan. Uh, it was used at the gas station since before World War Two. The current building with additions was built in nineteen fifty-four uh, with additions over the years. Uh, there's no permits since two thousand eleven, which is a demolition from there. Uh, the gas station is obviously closed for almost sixteen years, or if not more than sixteen years. And as we discussed before, in two thousand twelve, can't believe it's already that long ago. Uh, there was consideration from seven eleven, but that was denied. And there's been some multiple calls for criminal mischiefs related to spray painting. Otherwise, not much happening there because it's vacant for sixteen years. Uh, with regard to environmental contamination, uh, so get ready for this. So I just want to give a high level. Though the first report of contamination occurred January nineteen ninety and still remains contaminated to this day. So thirty-five plus years of contamination. So it started nineteen ninety-one, PSEG noticed there was gas sitting in a manhole uh, in the street, and I believe the plume was identified to affect the street as well as, uh, the property in question. Uh, nineteen ninety-two, a small waste oil UST was removed. They found impacted soils. Uh, but the geologist at the time said, no harm, no foul, no further action. But hey, we observed that this groundwater remediation going on. They saw eleven wells at the time. A year later, the property owner wanted to remove the whole system, really upgraded, and they found a crack in the rim. And when they, uh, removed the gas from the tank, the tank floated to the top of the water table. And then when they removed the tank, they found it was leaking. So another report was uh, filed with NGDP nineteen ninety-three, offices leaking, and over the course of several years, ninety-four to two thousand one, they did an active uh, like I said, you can call it passive, uh, groundwater remediation program through attenuation. Um, in two thousand twelve, I should go, so ten, by this time, two thousand twenty-ten, the gas station is already closed. So the, in nineteen ninety-three, when it's the three tank systems removed, two new tanks were put in, in two thousand ten, those two tanks were removed. Uh, there was soil contamination, but it was addressed, uh, but they found that there was still needing, uh, to test for and address groundwater contamination. It was still ongoing at the time. Uh, two thousand twelve, this is at the time due diligence for the seven eleven facility. And I, uh, based on the minutes and the resolutions and letters, uh, many of which Alan Williams was the author of them, was asking, what's the status? What's the, when's the REO coming? When's this being rectified? Uh, because this board had a keen interest on how this is being addressed. Basically, what it come, came down to was, it's going to be addressed. We're going to get a RHO, a remedial action outcome, but it never really occurred. Uh, two thousand fourteen, a groundwater, uh, remedial action permit was issued, uh, really based on, we're going to continue to do natural attenuation. As if the prior twenty-five years didn't work, so we keep doing natural attenuation. And the REO, basically the outcome, the final deliver goal is anticipated to be in sometime in twenty twenty-two. So it's a eight-year program. Going in twenty twenty-two, still groundwater attenuation, uh, sorry, groundwater contamination, and in two thousand twenty-three, the wrap was extended to twenty twenty-nine. Basically, what this means, after consulting with the LSRP, is that the uh, there are conditions that suggest that the attenuation is not working, and further um, intervention may be necessary. So this is a thirty-five year history of contamination at this rate. So now we're going to go into the actual site inspections. Uh, I'll try to run through these uh, as high level as I can without skipping. So what we found, the exterior of buildings, really poor condition, peeling paint, some water damage, and actually, it looks like uh, vehicles, uh, damaged the building as well. Uh, we found that there was some water damage on the outside, water staining in a block wall. Obviously, the buildings all boarded up, but when we went inside, we noticed doors, some doors and windows were broken, the glasses, uh, sort of on the ground on inside the building. On the interior is also poor condition, poor uh, poor, poor condition, water staining, water damage to the floors and wall. Uh, and some wood rot, where there was wood, since it's mostly a block building. Uh, we found that the water was still running and leaking. Um, the, when the maintenance person that I helped us with the inspection, us, it's myself and Scott Pressure, uh, construction code official, he assisted me in the inspection. We found that the water was still leaking. It's the best, the bottom left photo. They thought they had turned off the water off. This is like a second meter. They didn't know about it. Uh, and then elsewhere in the building, the ceilings, I say ceilings, moral, uh, above the toilet room, called, there's no sink and no finished, uh, uh, materials, uh, was had collapsed and onto the toilet. Uh, this is the shed behind the gas station. This was actually a shed that was built in nineteen ninety-three. It went to the zoning board of adjustment for a site plan. This shed was built for a, uh, really for the groundwater remediation effort uh, to do that, a water stripping tower, a stripping tower, uh, a holding tank, and some other equipment to deal with the, um, groundwater remediation project, project. Um, so this is ongoing for about eight years, nineteen ninety-four to two thousand one, after its construction. Three, obviously, this building, uh, this accessory structure called shed, severe disappeared. The roof escaped and opened to the element, and there's plant growth uh, going inside a building, and there was some, uh, insulation debris and, uh, whatnot all over the ground. Uh, rear yard is obviously was all paved at one point, but debris is growing through. There's leftover tires from, I presumably from sixteen years ago, still there. So that's a concern for mosquito breeding, and there's an abandoned vehicle stripped for parts. Uh, the parking lot in general, uh, is a not, not conforming with zoning. It's in front of the building. We do not allow that downtown. Uh, but that's and it's not conforming to the zoning, the redevelopment plan, as well as this general best practices in downtown area. And this, as we identified in master plan, the community said, this is a large gap. They use the word gap in the streets, get a huge gap, hundred and fifty feet of nothing but asphalt and oversized, uh, driveways. Uh, obviously, this impacts aesthetics and discouraged pedestrian activity and economic vitality, which is detrimental to the Raritan community. Uh, with regards to the actual layout and design, there's very little definition to this parking lot. It's simply just a mass of pavement. There's no defined parking spaces. There's no drive aisles. Users could just do whatever they want and spin around if they were to trespass on a site, which creates a dangerous conditions where people walk in on the site. As to the uh, accessible parking spaces, there are, it's required to be sixteen wide, then accessible. This does not meet that, and obviously, the conditions are such that it is not accepted, it is not accessible to to get to the building. And so it's undersized and pavement is repaired, simply it's not accessible. In terms of landscape buffers, there's really no buffer between the building and the retaining wall, so you can hit the building and damage building that looks like retaining walls or some damage. Uh, and probably most critically, there is no buffer along the public side. That's the top rate, but um, to manage walking through that parking lot, just like with the classic cleaners property and other properties that we studied, this condition is dangerous because motorists can go in and out of the parking lot uh, without any, and the pedestrian has no protection whatsoever. Uh, and also, there's this excess pavement on the, well, what was supposed to be a landscape buffer within South Second, that's the bottom left photo, that's supposed to be a landscape line that's paved over. So obviously, illegal parking space, and that damages trees and does not allow for further growth. So this all just exacerbates the heat on effect. That tree won't grow any further, impacted by the guy, if not already. And, uh, so this, this shows that there's excessive, excessive pavement, and the condition will make the heat on effect even worse over time, and which will mainly affect all the neighboring properties as well. Uh, the oversized curves, uh, so there's not one, not two, not three, but there's four driveways for this property. Along Raritan Avenue, there's three of them, and they all range from uh, twenty-two to thirty feet, but typical driveways typically twelve to eighteen one-way, twenty and twenty-four feet two-way. Um, and so it, the driveways occupy nearly two-thirds of the frontage, and the the raised curve is less than six inches in between the driveways, so it's very, um, shallow. Given the appearance that this is one giant, one, one hundred and fifty foot wide driveway, obviously extremely dangerous uh, to the public. And on South Second, this is the right side, the aprons is simply not done correctly. It's monolithic floor, and it's jutting into the street. And let's see, so all right, so the conditions of the property generally in poor condition, it was just really uh, indicative of the long-term vacancies of the property. Um, so these conditions, deterioration, various depression, settlement, missing pavement altogether. Uh, these will contribute to bonding, freeze stall, uh, slip hazards in winter, mosquito and fall, and obviously pests. In terms of land coverage, it's discussed already at length, uh, there's excessive land coverage. In terms of, if this lot was to repave in the front, uh, there would not be sufficient space to order to construct a conforming parking lot. There's typically not enough depth, eighteen, twenty-four, and a, and a walkway, simply not enough space to put a conforming parking lot. And if we are parking lot was intended for storage, so it really can't be reused for a rear parking for a public facility, because it was designed for tandem parking of uh, cars for storage or awaiting repair. If it was, if this became a new store, you won't get sixteen parking spaces back. You're going to get maybe six. Uh, so it's an inefficient use of land, uh, and high degree excessive pavement relative to the number of parking spaces that could be provided legally. This simply shows that, um, you know, the lack, and with the Alaska landscape lines, and the lack of street trees and shade trees means that uh, this all contributes negatively to the heat on effect. Terms of obsolescence, uh, did a little bit narrative on that, and that is so generally speaking, there's always going to be a need for gasoline service stations, no matter how hard we push for EV. Uh, there's always going to still be a need for gasoline service stations. Uh, and service stations really evolved over the years since its inception, it really began like at this location as a small roadside stop. And over the years, it's evolved to do tire changes and services, and even larger to like the giant Wawas or Buc-E's, if you've been to one, like Florence, South Carolina. Uh, so it's definitely transformed over the years, but in small downtowns like Cotton Park, they can still be relevant that they have, uh, space for a store and other, maybe EV parking or EV charging stations, but that's not possible here because of the issues I raised before, uh, because there's not enough room for conforming parking lot. They're kind of stuck. So the seven eleven application actually alluded to the fact that, well, in order to even keep a gas station, it need to be redeveloped. So I think that says a lot about, uh, that particular application. Um, so in, in the end, what this suggests is that these conditions do not lend itself to be used at the gas station today. So it just means that it's no longer useful today in its current condition and is functionally obsolete. So in summary, uh, the substandard conditions in a building is, is conducive to unwholesome working conditions. A, it's A. It's been vacant for more than two years. It's sixteen. It's B, and obviously, the obsolescence, faulty range of design, it's D. Um, so for those three criteria, and we had one, I found three criteria that four could rely on to suggest that the Sanoco Station meets the criteria for combination area. Uh, the other three, you go a little bit faster, I promise. Uh, so this is twenty, block twenty-two oh one, lots forty-seven, forty-eight, ten, ten fourteen, South Second Avenue, this is the BB Big Food Mart property, also includes cleaners. So this property was not part of the, uh, any prior redevelopment activities. It's still zone CBD and PO, meaning it's split zone. So the left side of property is actually in a zone where it only allows offices and single-family dwellings, and yet it's a store with a front parking lot, obviously not conforming. Uh, since it's used at a strip center with multiple stores, I believe it's Hubbard's at first, and now, well, was BB Big Food Mart. Permit's been taken out pretty regularly over the years, um, including permits where cars damage storefronts on multiple occasions. So permits were taken out to repair storefronts. Uh, the BB Big's food mart's been vacant for more than seven years, and Al's Professional Cleaners, more than four years. So collectively, that means the whole building and the property has been vacant for at least two years. So as you'll see, that hits B. In terms of the actual site inspections, uh, again, the exterior is generally in fair to poor condition. There's some chipping paint. Uh, it got exposed wiring and some ceiling and caulking missing from the window, so the building's Uh it got exposed wiring and there's some ceiling and caulking missing from the windows, so the building's not airtight or waterproof, so water. That infiltrates into the building. Uh on the outside of building, there's some missing down spouses, trash and debris everywhere, uh I didn't have the photo, but I remember someone actually came into. Borough Hall uh a week or two ago and had a photo of an overflowing trash can and I was going, yep. Just give me a couple of weeks and I'll show it to you, I didn't put the photo in, but nothing's changed, the trash everywhere in the front of the building. Uh in terms of the building, the roof structure, the the E's at the end of the property. Uh I'm sorry, ends of the building are uh so they look brought so wooden uh the water infiltration getting into the building. Uh and then obviously it's subject to pests and the large depression on the roof structure was suggested there might be water damage inside the building. Inside the building itself, because now starting with BB bigs, uh the it looked like the building was completely abandoned. There's still some food out there, there's still some water in storage and there are obviously expired goods. And when I said this was fun, when I took a closer look at the top right photo, those are pest droppings, there's thousands of pest droppings. So I had to get rid of my shoes after this. Um it's also in the kitchen area, there's some food waste still there, which is probably from seven years ago. And still there and then uh obviously this deterioration throughout, water damage. Uh and so on and so forth, this water infiltration in the refrigeration area and there's some open pipes in mechanical room. Uh in Al's cleaners, Al's professional cleaner, I think it's cleaners, that's my my fault. Uh there's some water infiltration underneath the equipment, uh missing tiles uh and just unfinished conditions. In the back of that building, there's a small shed, I think built for a boiler room, and for some reason, there's a downspout in the middle of the room. So obviously that semi block in the center photo, that's the old downspout nineteen seventy-one, they built around it. Not sure what that means with insulation around it, uh but otherwise on the other side of the building, the right side of the building, you'll see that there's corroded rust everywhere. Insulation's falling and the door that's supposed to be secure is open to the elements, I just walked right in, no key. I was given permission to trespass, uh so at the side and rear of the building, uh this is simply a fire hazard, trash and debris everywhere. Uh retaining walls is a concern as well, uh they're deteriorating and frankly, they're at a risk of failure, just horizontal and vertical. Displacement and there's some IV and plant growth growing into the retaining wall, what happened, that means that. As they grow and expand and there's pounding, sorry, freeze stall. That will just exacerbate that issue, so this concern of mine, so I'm an instructional engineer, but this is at a risk of failure. And just uh at least three retaining walls on the property. Uh similar to Sunoco Station has a not performing parking area at the front of the building, this actually has the proper depth, but it still lacks the. Uh lack of buffers uh between the parking area and the sidewalk, but what makes this worse i- in this case is that. The parking lot is pretty much squared off, so you have parking spaces over all the way to the end property, so that means when they try to back out, they have to. Use more distance and more maneuverability, being able to do almost a full K turn. To exit, but when you do that, the half hazard turn, you're more than likely to go into the public sidewalks and risk pedestrians, right? Obviously, that hasn't issued as of late because again, it's a vacant for seven years and appears to be used as parking for a reformed church. Again, we have oversized curb cuts, these are about twenty-five feet wide, generally oversized, uh but taken together, it's about occupied. Uh I believe I said it was over two thirds. Oh nearly half of the furniture property, and again, this is an inefficient use of land. Uh and design, which contributes to long walk walking distances, which is dangerous for pedestrians and so that obviously. A logical driving reason just makes that matters worse. Terms of the conditions, it's in fair condition, the park- the parking lot looked like it was repaved only a few years ago. Uh again, showing signs of deterioration, depression, settlement, bonding, et cetera, et cetera, same conditions as uh. A Sunoco Station, there's no storm or maintenance or water, just simply sheet flows onto the public sidewalk and there's a lot of pavement. About opportunities for infiltration. Uh so in summary, obviously we are touched by vacancy, all I can hit staff, easy, B. Uh in terms of the analysis, I I my opinion, the building is substandard, uh sorry, not letting working condition, unwholesome working condition. And again, there's faulty range of design and other deteriorating conditions, uh so it means A, B and D. Now moving on to one of the houses, this is one thirty-four Raritan Avenue, lot number six, block twenty-two oh one. Uh in terms of. The prior designation, it was already previously designated, area needed in two thousand five, so it's gonna be doing it again twenty years later. This is part of the two thousand five layout plan as well as what we. Call track B in the twenty twenty-one, now amended twenty twenty-four, we don't. There were concepts considered in two thousand nine, as I mentioned before, as well as two thousand seventeen, but they haven't not been able to. To uh secure offsite parking, so nothing's happened, it's kind of stagnant. It was last used in office space, you know, it looks like a house, uh and there's been no permits since two thousand twelve. And it's registered in vacant property to twenty twenty-one, so at least two years, already it hits criteria B. Cause it's a commercial use. Uh what we found through the records, there's broken water pipes, mist tax payments and liens, and eventually they were redeemed and settled, but there's been. A pattern of mist tax payments and liens uh and as well as conditions on property. Uh conducive to unwholesome working conditions. Exterior buildings generally in disrepair, the porch is literally falling apart, uh and the railings are not secure, I was actually almost fell. Uh and this is trash and debris everywhere, the spindles and the railings are broken. The building looked like it's was recently recited, but it's just lipstick on a pig because underneath it is deteriorating wood, wood rot and water infiltration. Uh back to buildings, which is a, this is supposed to be a rear porch, now see the roof caved in, there's trash and debris everywhere. Um it might be better if I had a video of this because there was trash everywhere. Uh as well as uh building materials, inside the building, uh this is on. This is both the person's second floors, this is again, it's an office space, you know, it looks like a house still. Uh there's peeling paint everywhere, ceiling, walls and on the floor, ceiling tiles caved in, kitchens, damage all over the kitchen. Uh and the tub and the bathroom upstairs start showing some deterioration, uh which suggested it might be water infiltration. In the basement, uh the basement windows weren't secured, they're also boarded up, but you push it open pretty easily. Uh and then a water heater and equipment was abandoned and I put this furnace according to the construction code official. I was touching that pipe and he said, don't do that, that's asbestos. Okay, so I won't do that. Uh front side of your yards is generally in disrepair, uh overgrown. Uh vegetation, the wood railing, uh rail lot, lots are in disrepair, so the railing is this. Kind of loose, that's why when I grabbed it, I go upstairs, I almost fell, uh and the backyard is actually paved. But it's, you know, everything's gone through it over the years and there's an abandoned vehicle, I I believe someone passed away. Uh and the vehicle's still there. Uh in terms of the faltering design, this is actually you raised in the two thousand five reports, I'm sort of reiterating, but. Go in a little bit more detail about why it's a faltering agent design, so in the two thousand five study, there was a number of conditions that. We just discussed from the steep slopes to hyperscore, uh that's not conducive to commercial development. Uh in its current form, and that's because. Uh and that generally means they cannot really positively contribute to the downtown area due to the lack of buffers. Uh and the condition of the gray change, uh reactivating commercial use, actually create a strain on community because. There's really limited access to rear, uh both in terms of access as well as parking, so actually there's no space to park. Or designing conforming parking lot on this lot alone. And then obviously access to go through park place, which will negatively impact the residents who live on that street as well as in the neighborhood. Um so in order to address that, you could build a driveway on Raritan, but that's not permitted. Plus, if you put a driveway on this property, you have to demo demolish the building, because the lot's so narrow. Uh so it re- really is no way to reactivate this building in its current form, it's commercial use. Plus, if there's a change to use, it's upgraded to ADA standards, which simply is not possible and cost prohibitive. Um this building frankly is better suited as a home, but that's not permitted, can we uh read off the plan? So the current form of the property, the size and shape of the property and the disposition of the improvements of the property. Uh it really is a barrier to revitalization and suppresses economic vitality and it's obsolete layout is detrimental to welfare. And you'll see, I'll incorporate my reference, the same argument I'm making for the met- this next lot, the last lot, lot number six next door. Um this is, uh actually, I think this is a. Sorry, the prior lot's one thirty, this is one thirty-four, right, I mean, I got my mind, I'm just wrong, I'll just address that. Oh, sorry, going too fast, this is the summary of the house we just did, one thirty, right, so I as I indicated. The property has substandard conditions conducive to unwholesome working conditions, uh so. Criteria A, vacant for more than two years, criteria B, pretty easy, faulty range and design, obsolete layout detrimental to community, D. Now, section three criteria, mentioned before, um this is actually someone to the classic cleaners argument. This is the hole in the donut because, as you know, with the track B, lot six needs lot nine. In order to be redeveloped, in the same argument you made for that property as well, lot nine needs lot six to redevelop by virtue of that uh redevelopment plan. Plus, it also is a hole in the donut of the two thousand five redevelopment plan. And likely the hole in the donut, if you were to pursue a different redevelopment plan that considers this study area as a new project. So multiple ways, this meets criteria with the intent purposes such as three criteria. Also, this was raised at the last meeting too, they say, oh, well, if you said section three, that means doesn't you, I'm not saying it means A, B, D. That's not the point I'm trying to make, I'll make it clear on the record that it means A, B and D, but if for some reason you disagree, you can rely on section three. This is the last property, the house next door, next to Mary Restaurant uh Restaurant. Uh again, this property was designated area to be redeveloped in two thousand five and as part of their two thousand five. Uh redevelopment plan and it again is part of the track B at two thousand twenty-one and amended. Twenty twenty-four redevelopment plan and someone comments as the lot of the property. A lot with the other lot taken together was uh contests were considered two thousand nine and two thousand seventeen. Poor mixed-use buildings and again, did not pursue and were unable to secure offsite parking. Uh this building was last used as a commercial space with an apartment above it. Um that's important because the section B criteria, uh criterion B. Refers to only commercial spaces, has no indication in statute that I can include the mixed-use. Use a mixed-use property or one that includes residential, because there is residential use here. We cannot use criteria B, just wanna make that clear. Uh there's been some calls with theft and burglary, again, another burst water pipe, actually, this is recent. Uh I actually had a call DPW because the water department called, so we assisted on that. And it's a regular pattern of mist payments and taxing, but they've been redeemed with a new property owner a few years ago. And the property was vacant in uh. Registered taken property in twenty twenty-five, another reason why we can't use criteria B because in that statute, uh has to be at least two consecutive years. Building exterior similar to the um other property, poor condition, lack of maintenance, which is very indicative of the. Long-term vacancies, chipping paint, water damage, wood rot, just missing elements altogether, trash and debris under the porch. As well as block access to two units, there's a downstairs unit. But really it's the upper for ground floor unit and there's a second floor unit. Um in the back of property, there's this, I I guess you can call it a porch, there's some sheathing on the side and it's completely rotted. Um away and uh let's see what else I, it's peeling away, it's rotted, this mold, this railings are broken, the roof is damaged. And again, there's trash and debris blocks access to the back door and when I look through the second floor window, there's no shingles. So and there's, at the time, it was the snow had fallen to this ponding uh water on the roof. Uh on the lower levels, that's a. That's a basic window, it's not affixed at all, so I pushed it and it swung around like carousel. Uh and now obviously the rest of the building, the uh siding is in complete disrepair, wood rot and water infiltration. And it's my understanding, I don't believe I put this in report, but the property owner said that one of these two properties, there was squatters. And you saw there was easy access to the building by just pushing the window open, so frankly, I'm not surprised, but when I did my inspection with Mr. Pressure. We did not see any squatters. Uh on the inside of building, there is apparently a water leak, which still hasn't been addressed, uh well. The damage from the water leak hasn't been addressed, so obviously the floor is warped away and the ceiling tiles crashed into. The a residential refrigerator and a triple compartment sink, again, this is the commercial space, kind of looks like a quasi-home office. It's the strangest space I've been in. On the second floor unit, there's mold pretty much everywhere, it's pretty disgusting, uh I might have lost a few years of my life in that building. Uh in the basement, there's again more mold and water infiltration, basic trash and. It looked like it had been abandoned and the top rate was interesting, that's a toilet in the middle of the room. So if you want a toilet, a house with a toilet that's open to the room, you got one there. I think the bathroom was probably built to skip uh built to codes, but. Uh the room probably not, plus it's also not clear whose space that is, again, the first floor is its own key unit. Second floor is its own key unit, two different tendencies, it's not clear how the basement is um utilized in that regard. The front yard is actually not as bad as the other property, but the stone. Uh stairway is in disrepair, it's uh on an angle on chipping paint. I, when I first did my inspection, it was when it was snowing and sleeting and I slipped, you know, fell down the stairs. Uh still smarting on that, rear yard area again was supposed to be. Well, that's supposed to be, it was paved, but you can't tell anymore because it's leaves and debris everywhere. And the same argument about faltering and design, uh this property cannot be reactivated on its own as a commercial use because it's simply too narrow. You can't put a conforming parking lot in the back, you have to access it from rear, which will negatively impact the neighbors on park place and neighboring streets. And to put a parking lot uh driveway from Raritan into the lot would mean demolishing the building. So it's not possible to reactivate the commercial use, again, we better as a home, but it's not permitted. Uh so the summary here is the same, well, similar as the other house, except for criteria B. I find that this has substandard conditions to unwholesome working conditions as well as living, I did not put that slide. That's means criteria A, faltering design, obviously layout of the factors D, and again, the same argument. Lot nine needs lot six to be developed, it's a hole in the donut with each other, so you can rely on section three if for some reason you were disagreeing. That what criteria, criteria on A or D to develop, right? So that's the conclusion of the report for separate properties, they all mean at least. Um two criteria, if not the section three criteria. Uh my recommendation is for the planning board to advise the mayor and council that this property does meet the criteria as a combination area. Any questions?
Thank you. Can we do?
For the last property, one thirty rare ten. When was last time this property was occupied by a tenant? I know that you said it was registered in state in twenty twenty-five, but prior to that, do we know like when was last time someone non-squatter?
Uh that will be. I don't mean to ruin, that'd be almost impossible to tell, so I'm just relying on records. Um I saw police reports about the resident living apartment observing an incident in the street within the past couple of years. Uh but there's a gap in records, obviously, it's not much, I mean, that is probably. All I have is that the property is vacant as of February twenty twenty-five, that doesn't mean it's only been vacant for what? Six months, it could be longer, but I can't uh assume that's two years or more.
Hey Chris.
I, I'm sorry.
No, 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 finish.
I just. It is appalling, the condition of this property and it is absolutely appalling to me that there would be people living in this property. Subject to the condition of this property and actually paying someone rent. I think, I mean, I know this is maybe not the appropriate venue, but I feel like I have to say this. As a borough, we have to be better by the residents that live here to make sure that people, our neighbors are not living in these conditions. And that that homes around a house like this are not subject to have to put up with. The effects of living in a small home in this condition, I I can't understand how this could happen that. I know that when a landlord um leases an apartment to a tenant, they have to get a certificate of occupancy. And this isn't being followed up on, there's like a record of new tenants, you have to register your property for rent. So there should be some checkpoints so that we have, I mean, we have these things in place. And landlords should be fined for this, this is abhorrent, no one should be living like this. For the health department, I saw in your report, it didn't respond, I guess there were no calls to the health department about these conditions. But oftentimes, people living in these conditions um may not feel like they are in a position to report the landlord in these conditions. I'm just very stacked by seeing this and I mean, this is. I'm I'm sorry that you had to experience this, I'm pretty sure your lungs were hurting from breathing in that mode.
Uh yeah, yeah, I think I got sick afterwards, but it's also winter time, uh just to comment on the health department. It's not that they didn't respond to calls, there may be records, I just not did not receive them.
Other questions?
Chris, how is this, how is this study different from the last one you did? Or Alan, or we, we've been through this before.
I don't think I'm prepared to go into detail about the exact differences, uh, but that the properties that were in the two thousand and five study, that was probably began in two thousand and four. Um, which is the Sunoco Gas Station and the two homes next to it. They were deemed area in need for a lot of the same reasons.
From what I heard, um, almost all the same.
Yes, and I think at the time, and it might apply to at least one of the houses, there was discussion about the Sunoco Station was using one of them, likely one thirty four Raritan as basically a junkyard for vehicles. Um, I think that's in the report. And I have the planning board resolution from the time discussing that at length. Obviously, that's irrelevant now because it's not there anymore, but you can see the remnants of it because it's broken pavement everywhere. And that one car that's still there uh was from the gentleman that passed away that recently.
Did you ever talk to Alan about that Sunoco application?
Uh, no.
I was there. Any other questions?
Hey, it is a minor thing, but on the, on the cover here, um, on the various pictures you've shown, it has in the back of the Sunoco, I think, kind of like if you're facing the Sunoco Station, the right side behind that, where it goes behind the shopping plaza. On all the pictures here on like Google Earth and everything, that's full, there's like fifteen cars back there. And you mentioned that there's one that's like all chopped up and everything, or the rest of them all gone, they're not there anymore? Okay.
Yeah, so the photo was a snap, a snip really from Google Maps.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't check the precise date of the publication. It seems to imply it was recent, so I actually frankly surprised to see that and I'm part of it's intentional, keep it in there. Uh, so that your eagle eye noticing all the cars back there was, I'm glad you caught it. It's like, it's like one of those um Mickey Mouse heads that you find it. Uh, but obviously, that's not the condition today. It's just a representative cover photo.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, yes. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you for risking your life for us. We really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the thoroughness of of the report. Um, uh, to to leave it to your, to your point, I full stop a hundred percent, we ought to be making sure that this doesn't happen. I do want to point out that I think it has been vacant for a lot longer than six months and a lot longer than that because it's part of track B. And when track B was going through the process of getting their approvals for originally sixteen units and then ultimately thirty two units, they had moved everybody out and that was, I think, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So it's my guess is it's been abandoned since twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen.
So there's no one's been living there.
I, I, again, I don't want to say that for sure. I just want to say that that is part of of track B. My guess is that they probably moved everybody out because they were expecting they were gonna, gonna, gonna build on that, so. Um, and then just, I wanted to point out, I know everybody's read this uh report in detail, but I just, I I have to read this that on page thirty eight in the report and says nineteen seventy seven, an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval was granted by the planning board, um, uh, to eliminate from Raritan Avenue, one of the worst eyesores in town. And that was written into the planning board report in nineteen seventy seven along as they had to have the installation of holding tanks for unleaded gas gasoline required by the new cars at the time. So
Bruce, Bruce was, you were here for that, right?
I don't know if you were here, Bruce, but in nineteen seventy seven, they were excited by this. It was gonna get rid of this. I say it's about time, so thank you very much.
Probably a great book that comes. So I'd like to entertain him. How should we do this? It's all being brought up, even though there are different criterias for different lots. We are going to vote on the entire package, is that correct? Is that the
I'll defer to council, but I sound like I, there's no pushback on any of the criteria.
And I recall I did one in the fall twenty three and I think we did individual lots. But if you're, there's, there's more controversy with that one, so we're fine with just
in my opinion, especially the, we have A, B, and D for three out of the four sections. And then the final building, uh, we do have, I believe, A and D, I think, or whatever the, anyway, there's solid criteria for all four lots. I would propose that we make a, let's say, combined or like it, uh,
One vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can accept the findings of the report, but collectively and ultimately in the end, um, you're declaring or recommending that the entire study area uh be declared a combination area, you know.
I'd like your motion on that.
Do we open up the public?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, but it's already seen go public in the chambers. Is there any public statements from the?
Uh, no, there's not.
All right, thank you for letting me, uh, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the end of the report.
Second, Mr. Williams, I guess. All right, roll call.
Richard?
Yes.
Listen, has it? Yes. Mr. Hal?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hope? Mr. Len hours?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hard enough?
Yes.
Mr. Will?
Um, just in, so we'll run through the rest, any correspondence from zoning board officers not here? Uh, any other matters, any public comment out there for any other matters up pertaining? So I'd like to then, anybody have anything else to say at this time?
If, if I can just say real quick on
No, that's okay.
August twentieth, from six to eight P M is an open house about Third Avenue. So um it's, it'll be intense to come and see, um, what some of the ideas are, what some of the
Sorry, could you repeat the time?
It's August twentieth, six to eight P M at the thirty seven. Um, so it's a drop five, so you can come in anytime during that, um, but please come and you'll see some of the things going on with with the third hour. So it's been exciting and moving forward.
So I did a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All this is paper? Hi. All right. And thank you everyone, we've got a lot of work done.